Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Councilwoman Martin, if you'll take us through that.
Sure. Thank you. Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we want to thank you for the blessings that you offer us, especially in this month as we're approaching a holiday that we celebrate, that we call Thanksgiving. I ask that everyone take a moment during this Thanksgiving holiday to remember you with gratitude and thankfulness for everything that you provide for us. Thank you for your protection, for your oversight. Thank you for wisdom and knowledge. Please let your word shine a light on our path, on our journey as we go forward, in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There, sir. So we'll move directly into the public hearings. Matt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Your public hearing for this evening is for some proposed text amendment related to the ongoing Unified Development Ordinance audit that's being conducted by the planning board. This deals with Articles One and Two on that UDO.
Matt, excuse me. Could you come closer to the microphone, please?
Sorry. Forward a little bit here. Sorry about that. Once again, this deals with the ongoing UDO audit that the planning board is performing. This particular public hearing deals with Articles One and Two. So as a part of that ongoing audit process, the planning board has had a consensus to advance simple strike-through and small modifications to the ordinance as the process is ongoing. So basically, if something can be removed from the ordinance and not really affect how the town goes about its business, basically superfluous language, or make small changes that wouldn't really affect policy in any major way, to go ahead and initiate those text amendments and recommend, make a recommendation to town council. This is the recommendations of the Council of Governments, who the town and council has contracted with to perform this UDO audit. So they make the recommendations, and planning board considers those. And if there's a consensus, then those are forwarded on. This certainly is not the whole of the audit process. There are certainly some more nuanced items that would come once those recommendations are fully reviewed. In addition, I'd point out that this is the smallest group you'll get out of everything. This was a meeting where we also had some planning board training prior to. So keep that in mind. I know we've got some packed agendas coming up. These are going to get longer as we go along. But this is from the first meeting, the October, actually, from the first round of review. The planning board considered these at their October meeting and voted to initiate the text amendment and recommend town council adopt the proposed amendments. So these mainly deal with several sections of the ordinance that are already within state statutes. They're either, or they may be somewhere else in the ordinance, or they may just be out of date. Those sections have been struck through. We'll move through those, kind of a brief summary of them. Section 1.3 contains several sections of the ordinance that are redundant with the state statute. For the most part, this language is actually exactly as it is found in the state statute. So in that instance, it makes sense to remove it because if the General Assembly chooses to change that language, then we're stuck playing catch-up because our ordinance says something different than the statute does. The statute governs us already, anyway. You don't have to duplicate that language in your ordinance in order for it to be applicable. Section 1.8 deals with violations of the UDO. There's a statement in there that the assessment of a civil penalty may be appealed to the Board of Adjustment. What the Board of Adjustment hears is violations of the UDO. So a member of the town staff would say, "You're in violation of the UDO. Here's a civil penalty that's associated with it." The Board of Adjustment decides whether you've actually violated the ordinance or not, not a civil penalty. You may have several civil penalties levied at you under one violation, if it's ongoing. So to say that those individual civil penalties are appealable to the Board of Adjustment, the Board of Adjustment would decide whether you're in violation or not. They don't necessarily want to decide every single civil penalty as a part of that. 2.1 contains a section regarding conflicts with the state building codes. This is governed by state statute. The ordinance cannot be in conflict with the state building code. Section 2.2 contains a little bit of a weird section. It deals with interpretations of the UDO and how to interpret whether use is permitted. The very last provision there requires the UDO administrator, your town staff, to assist someone with a text amendment, essentially to help them write a text amendment if something's not in the UDO. Town staff is here to represent the adopted plans and policies of the town. What you don't want me to do is help someone write a text amendment and then come in front of you and say, "Well, staff wrote this text amendment, but it's not in compliance with the town's policies and plans." So, for example, if we say someone wants to do something that's not permitted in the CB, we have guidance in our CB zoning district. It's not listed as a permitted use. We have guidance in our adopted plans that say, "We, as a town, don't want this use in this zoning district." I would then be forced to go into a position where I have to help them write a text amendment, even though it's not something that the town policies support. So that's something that should be removed from the ordinance. 2.3, there's a few strike-throughs there. Once again, those are several sections that are redundant with other sections of the ordinance or general statutes. 2.4 contains a provision that essentially, if you have a split-zone parcel, I mean, you have one piece of property, one section might be zone residential and one section commercial. What this says is that you could develop that entire property, and you essentially kind of get to pick which zoning applies. That's a little bit of a gray area legally. You know, you're applying zoning development standards to an area that's not zoned as that without actually amending the zoning map to apply that. The recommendation of the COG was to make it so that you're developing based on the underlying zoning district. So you develop the commercial portion based on the commercial zoning, the residential portion based on the residential zoning. Simply having two zoning categories on one property doesn't mean you can develop the whole thing under one district. And then 2.6 and 2.7, once again, contain redundant provisions. 2.6.1 has a section about Article Nine related to non-conforming situations. That section of the ordinance automatically applies to everything. That provision in the language is redundant and unnecessary. And then 2.7 deals with the effect of private deed restrictions. Once again, that's redundant. That is already the case, regardless of whether the ordinance says it or not. So removing that language would not really affect the way the town does business. So as I mentioned, this was reviewed at the October planning board meeting. They recommended town council approve the proposed text amendment, finding this consistent with our comprehensive plan as well as reasonable in the public interest. And so the recommendation is to approve the text amendments as drafted and adopt the associated consistency statement. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, if you have any. This is really the most basic ordinance maintenance you can do, just cleaning up redundant provisions that, or things that aren't applicable or are already applicable without them being in the ordinance.
Counsel, are there questions?
I have a couple. Matt, in 1.3, where you delete some of the language, can we put back in general statute, North Carolina General Statute 160 D-204? That way, the people don't have to go looking all through everywhere or Googling how to find something. Just tell them what stat, keep that in there. This is the statute it applies to.
That's certainly one way to construct an ordinance. The idea here is that if it's already in the statute, we don't want it in the ordinance. Because if that statute changes, then we have to play catch-up as a town and change that ordinance. Not only do they change the substance of the ordinance sometime, or the statute, sometimes things are moved. You know, you might have a new statute number. Then that's something that has to change. And in that case, we have ordinance reference, to your point, that might go to the wrong place. And then it's even more confusing because we've said, "Hey, go look at this section of the general statute." And then it's incorrect, for whatever reason. And that's the reason for these recommendations. Certainly, you know, these are simply recommendations. Town council can do something different if it chooses to.
In 1.8, I understand the Board of Adjustment deals with the infraction, not the penalty. It's not spelled out anywhere, and the common man doesn't know. Who do I appeal to?
It is spelled out later on in the ordinance. So the idea there is to consolidate the appeals in one appeals section so that you don't have this section here. Like, when I'm staff and I'm sending, to your point, something to a citizen, I can send them one section of the ordinance that totally deals with appeals. They don't have to go look and hunt and pick and choose. They just get that one appeals section that deals with everything. So that's the thinking there.
As much as anything, this is like last time you were here, cleaning up some ambiguous language, best you can.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
I'm good, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, while we were just on 1.8, the last sentence is interesting. When you say it creates the expectation that any civil penalty may be appealed, but in fact, it can't. It cannot, correct?
Well, so what you wouldn't want to have happen is, say, you get a notice of violation from the town. You don't do anything about it. You might have several months of civil penalties accrue, and then you appeal each one individually to the Board of Adjustment. What you would instead do is appeal your notice of violation to the Board of Adjustment, and they could potentially review any penalties that were associated with that under the course of reviewing your infraction of the ordinance. I hope that makes sense.
Just for the edification of all, self-included. So can you succinctly summarize the jurisdiction of the Board of Adjustment?
Sure. The Board of Adjustment in the town hears variances and appeals. So anytime staff makes a determination, that determination can be appealed to the Board of Adjustment. Have a quasi-judicial hearing, where it's like going to court and you present evidence to your case. The other thing that the Board of Adjustment hears is variances. So if, for whatever reason, you can't meet your building setback, you can appeal that, you can ask for a variance. Once again, it's a quasi-judicial hearing where they hear, have to meet certain standards in order to grant that variance. But those are the two things that the Board of Adjustment in the town hears.
And should a plaintiff want to appeal the decision of the Board of Adjustment, then they have to, they have access to judicial system.
That's right. I guess, of course. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Matt? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments to Articles One and Two of the Unified Development Ordinance as drafted and adopt the associated consistency statement.
Second.
I'm very sorry, but can you close the public hearing first?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I had that in my list.
Don't make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor? It's unanimous.
Now, I will make the motion.
Please.
Did she say wait?
No, I said, "please."
Okay. Motion to approve the amendments to Article One and Two of the Unified Development Ordinance as drafted and adopt the associated consistency statement.
Second.
All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Presentations and proclamations. We have a proclamation this evening on behalf of the town for Veterans Day, November 11, 2022. This is an important day. We have Oak Island as a number of veterans who, within our community, and several organizations which serve them. So I think this proclamation is on point. So, whereas in order that we may pay fitting homage to those who have served in our armed forces, the United States Congress has provided that November 11 of each year shall be set aside as a legal public holiday to honor America's veterans. And whereas on Veterans Day, we pay tribute to the service and sacrifice of the men and women who, in defense of our freedom, have bravely worn the uniform of the United States. And whereas our country is forever indebted to our veterans for their quiet courage and exemplary service, and we should reflect on that great achievement of those whose sacrifices preserved our freedom and our way of life. And whereas with a spirit of pride and gratitude, we can remember our veterans' heroic accomplishments and thank them for their unselfish devotion to duty. They're indeed worthy of the solemn tribute of a grateful nation. And whereas many veterans call Oak Island home, it's fitting that the town government publicly recognize these individuals for their service. So now, therefore, I, as Elizabeth White, Mayor of the town of Oak Island, do hereby proclaim and affirm, November 11, 2022, as Veterans Day in the town of Oak Island, and further encourage all citizens to recognize the bravery and sacrifice of our veterans by attendance and/or otherwise support ceremonies and recognitions, and by offering personal expressions of gratitude, particularly on this day, to our local veterans. So I've asked our council's veteran, Mr. Blaylock, to present this to the members of the VFW who are here. Did they, there we go. Thank you very much, gentlemen. We very much appreciate you and all that the VFW does for our community and our veterans. Thank you. Next is a presentation of our Oak Island Fire Department. Interim Chief Price has a presentation about CPR and saving lives.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, manager. The town of Oak Island Fire Department provides BLS, Basic Life Support and Response, to the citizens of the town. Two types of responses, your ALS and your BLS, Advanced Life Support, or your Basic Life Support. ALS is typically your ambulance response as provided by the county. The paramedics typically are the ones to provide the care responding on the ambulance and do the transporting. BLS is typically your first response unit, such as the fire trucks and other non-transport units. ALS is able to give some advanced medications, like pain meds and such other things. But the BLS units also provide Narcan for overdoses, Albuterol for breathing problems, Epinephrine for allergic reactions. The most important thing that we all do provide is CPR and defibrillation. And that's what I'd like to talk about for just a little bit this evening. What is cardiac arrest? Well, cardiac arrest is when the heart suddenly and unexpectedly stops beating. It is a medical emergency that, without immediate medical intervention, will result in sudden cardiac death within minutes. CPR and possibly defibrillation are needed until further treatment can be provided. Cardiac arrest results in a rapid loss of consciousness. Breathing may be abnormal or absent. CPR, the emergency procedure consisting of chest compressions, often combined with artificial ventilations in an effort to manually preserve intact brain function until further measures are taken to restore spontaneous blood circulation and breathing in a person who is in cardiac arrest. Chances of survival are increased with bystander CPR, hands-on-the-chest, and push. Chances are also increased with early defibrillation with an AED. Quick response from rescuers also increase the chances of the resuscitation. Just everyone knows the national cardiac resuscitation rate is 10%. From September 24, 2022 to November 1, 2022, the town of Oak Island has had six cardiac arrest calls. The combined efforts of Oak Island Fire Police, along with Brunswick County EMS, have produced two saves out of the six cardiac arrests in the town. While this number doesn't seem tremendous, it makes our cardiac arrest save for the last 45 days 30%. I would like to recognize the crews for their response and efforts in providing BLS support skills to save our citizens. On September 24, Captain Chris Seillings, who was with us tonight, firefighter Buddy Hess, who was also with us tonight, firefighter Mike Young, and on October 11, we had Captain Robert Schrak, firefighter Sarah Jordan, firefighter David Lovin, and myself. I will say, on a personal note, what makes this so nice is the gentleman we had on October 11 came by and saw us at the fire station the other day, him and his wife did. There's no better feeling than to see the person that you saved their life come up and give you a hug, knowing that he's going to spend some more time with his family and with his life, with his wife. It's, that's the whole job in itself. In both cases, bystander CPR and quick response by the fire department and the police department, too. I have to give credit where credit is due. Chief Morrison, his guys, there's been quite a few calls we come in. Police department's in there doing CPR because they're closer to the scene or whatever. This is a team effort to make this happen. But quick defibrillation, the patient has proved successful in the resuscitation. It's also a reminder, please call 911 early. If you feel bad, experience chest pains, having shortness of breath, and learn CPR, it can definitely save someone's life. Just so that, you know, the town has defibs installed here at Town Hall, at the rec center at 801, and we're updating those with some of the newer ones as we go along, as they get some time dated on them. So that's all I have, Mayor. But what I would like to do is recognize the guys and their hard work and efforts and everything else on the saves and everything.
Thank you, Chief.
I like it.
We very much appreciate our law enforcement officers and our fire department for all that you do for the community. Your services are appreciated and not without notice. So thank you very much for being here tonight. Next is, are there any adjustments or approval, adjustments to the agenda, or do I have a motion to approve it as it exists?
Don't move, Madam Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Unanimous. With that, we come to public comment. Based on the crowd, I think I have an inkling matching that to all of the questions that we collectively have received. We could probably guess what the majority of comments are. I do ask that each of you state your name and your address, please, before addressing the council. Try, to the best of your ability, to not say the exact same thing that someone else has. If, in fact, you have a different take on it or a different perspective that you'd like us to consider, please, we want to hear what that is. We're not trying to constrain anyone from input to this process. And above all, I ask, this is a highly emotionally-charged issue, and I do ask for your respect as you speak to counsel. So, very much so. Lisa.
Rosalie Farley. Thank you for having me here. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilors. My name is Rosalie Farley, and I live at 101 Northeast 72nd Street. I am on the Par Three Committee, and I would like to give you a quick update on our recent successful activities. For many years, the town of Oak Island has supported the Little Pink Houses of Hope. Again, on October 22, the Oak Island Par Three at South Harbor hosted a charity tournament for the Swing for Hope Challenge 22, which benefits breast cancer patients and their families in their recovery. The support that is extended helps every year the Little Pink Houses of Hope, a local North Carolina charity, to host a vacation retreat here on Oak Island for the breast cancer patients and their families. This year's turnout had 72 registered players of all levels and 20 volunteers. This day was all about having fun while supporting this charity. Speaking of support, I would like to recognize the following contributors who were approached by our committee: Members Linda Sakaro and Gaye Pouchet. They are as follows: Oak Island Golf Club, Oak Island Recreation Center, Brunswick Girls Cancer Support Group, George Byrne, Dairy Queen, Elizabeth Pollock, Yankee Candle Provisions Company, Gonzo's Animal House, The Break, Back to Shuckers, Island Joe's, Maxine McCullar, Oak Island Fishing Pier Complex, Ocean Outfitters Par Three, Little Pink Houses of Hope, Mermaid Cove, Jumpin' Java, Food Lion, Oak Island Sub Shop, Teresa Grimley, Lowe's Food, Marge Gringa Jewelry, Beechy Haircuts, Wine Rack, and Seaside, excuse me, Seaside Mermaid. We look forward to next year to make this bigger and even more profitable for the Little Pink Houses of Hope. Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts.
Laura Thompson?
Hello, my name's Laura Thompson, and I live on Southeast 3rd Street. I am a stay-home mother who has an 11-month-old baby. However, finances are rising. Why should we have to pay for parking? Let's not forget about our senior citizens. A lot of the citizens are retired on a fixed income and already struggling. Seniors move here, and people live here. They deserve to go to the beach without paid parking. How is our community supposed to afford paid parking when everything is already pricey? The beach helps people with mental health, including myself. If the committee decides to do paid parking, how are citizens who live here supposed to cope? Or people, sorry, I'm messing up. What about the people who are handicapped? Are they going to have to lose going to the beach because they can't pay for parking or have to walk miles away to afford parking? That's all I got.
Thank you very much for your input.
And I have one more, since I have time. The food and beverage workers, they don't make enough for paid parking either. So it's, I'm just concerned on how, you know, people are supposed to afford paid parking with disabilities and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Janie Brown?
Mine is a repeat of what she said.
Okay. It's a fine. No, if it's just a repeat and you're passing on to the next, then it's, you can do that from your chair.
Tammy Smith?
Was there anything else? I'm sorry. We didn't want to cut you off. Okay. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Tammy Smith. I live at Northwest 5th Street. I have been coming here since I was a teenager. Love this island because of the great beach access and family atmosphere and fishing. My husband and I have visited several communities up and down the North Carolina coast before deciding on Oak Island. It was a great and homey community atmosphere that we loved. But in the last five, six years, I've seen this atmosphere change. After the 2016 election, there was a boom in the country, more jobs, more money to buy, et cetera. The economy was recovering at an accelerated rate. And also here, Oak Island, did the same thing. I noticed a lot of construction companies buying, reselling, I'm sure at a profitable margin, which is, you know, great for, you know, doing your own business. But I am against the paid parking. I understand this island was for the average working families, an affordable place for citizens that are not millionaires. The working people that keep this country going is what I envisioned this all my growing-up life. With inflation at a 40-year-high, peaking at 9.1% this year, why do you want to add another fee for the visitors and/or residents? What is the money from the parking fees going to be used for? How much will this cost? Has anyone even got any numbers on that? got any numbers on this? I have heard nothing. I, I feel that this could, should be considered more because of the senior, as, as the lady before me stated. Did you consider that more than 50% of the residents on Oak Island are seniors? And I assume this is a digital or technical way to submit the payment. I know some people would have problems achieving this. So what's gonna happen when problems happen? You can't get your payment in, and the cost of enforcing this paid parking. If there is no other way, could we use a referendum, which is decided by the voters to decide about this? Also, the sewer system that was installed over 10 years ago, our streets were dug up, they are still not repaired, but I have noticed a few random streets that have been repaved. What is the plan to repair these roads? Also, on the sand, I don't know that much about it. I'm just learning some things, and I need more information as I feel other taxpayers are not understanding what is going on with this. I would like to know more. And lastly, the, we are big fishermen. We, that's why we built a house here. We love it. We love the fishing. And we have always went to the point. But the last three, four, or five years, I have noticed all these gangs of boats coming down there, which I'm a boat owner, don't have a problem with that. But they have these 20, 30-foot line anchors out from the waterway, and there's 30, 40, 50 there. You couldn't walk on the water, you know, for, for anyway. They're dangerous. Plus, when we're fishing all the way at the point, they'll roll right on top of you. You're right in the line, you're, you're...
I'm sorry, Ms. Smith, that's, that's three minutes.
I'm sorry, I wasn't watching the clock.
Okay, that's good. I just wanted to get my point across. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor and Town Council, I am Joyce Martin, and I live at 129 Northwest 15th Street. And I have been a full-time resident for over four years. Again, I come to talk with you about the handicapped beach accesses. Mr. Kelly advised me after the August Town Council meeting that a handicapped access had been created at 19th Street East. He asked me to let him know what I thought about the, the accessibility. I visited the access, and with the use of a beach wheelchair, I was able to get on the beach. The access had a good slope to it, however, there were no handicapped parking spaces at that location. Fast forward to the end of September, and Hurricane Ian came through Oak Island. All of the Movi mats were taken up in preparation of the storm. According to the Oak Island website, the Movi mats have not been replaced, and the town is waiting on further instructions from KAMA on the placement of these mats, and this could take some time. Being handicapped does not have a season. We are handicapped all year round. The handicapped of Oak Island are being discriminated against due to the lack of American Disabilities Association-approved beach handicap accesses. We are taxpayers just like everyone else. The weather's been beautiful lately, and I'm sure a lot of you have enjoyed the beach. However, I wanted to go, but I couldn't, because I had no beach access, handicapped access, to get there. When the mats are put back down, please be sure they are not just thrown down to say they're handicapped accesses like in the past. Be sure they meet the ADA requirements before someone gets hurt, or there is a lawsuit against the town. We should not have to wait until the tourists come to get something done. Also, I am against paid parking. Residents should not ever have to pay for parking at the beach. We pay enough in taxes as it is. Also, I noticed on the, the sign over here on the wall, there are no handicapped parking accesses on the chart. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Honorable Ma'am, Madam Mayor and the Town Council. I'm Sylvia Garwood. I live at 113 Southwest 24th Street. I've lived here over three years. I'm here and follow up to what Joyce Martin has talked about, but to further explain. I want to thank Mayor White that after a period of time where we've been coming here every month talking to you all, that she came out and met with us individually to talk about how to improve handicapped accesses. And that is how we came about getting the handicapped access that Ms. Martin just spoke of. We thank her for that, but as soon as we got the handicapped access that actually worked with the Movi mat, then they were yanked up because of the storm. So now we are coming back to you, and I want to point out to you that I have given to the secretary a piece of paper that is titled, "Suggestions for Handicapped Access to the Beach." And in that, I've come back with a very simple solution until KAMA comes up or helps you all to know something. Give us one access at the west end, one access at the east end, one in the middle. Make it Movi mat accessible or accessible for anybody who, not everybody has a golf cart, or not everybody has access to a beach wheelchair. So, I would like for you all to look at this and consider it. I think there may be one correction that needs to be made about where the correct, the corrected access was made, and that would be under number item one. If you all will just correct that to what the correct access was that Ms. White helped us to get. Above and beyond that, I just want to step aside and say also that Joyce, Ms. Martin and I, and myself, we contacted a gentleman named Billy Eno with the ADA office out of Wilmington. And he came down and he met with us. And I would like for the gentleman to please queue up a video that we have of him at the beach.
This gentleman's name again?
Billy Eno, and he is with the North Carolina ADA State Resource Network out of Wilmington.
Thank you.
He himself is limited to a wheelchair. And we wanted to share with you, how do I press it to get it to play? Okay. This is at the 10th Street access. He's an athlete. This is the ramp, just to try to get up to the viewing area. And all he was trying to do was just to get from his van to there. So I just want to leave you with a little bit of humor associated with this. How many of you remember the video from the news network back a while ago that sounded something like this? And just leaving it with that, there is the agony of defeat. And we would like for you all, the council, to work with us to have the thrill of victory. Thank you.
Margaret Ann Johnson?
Good evening. I'm Margaret Ann Johnson, 1716 West Dalton Drive, also Chair of the Environmental Advisory Committee. I'm here tonight first to thank you for your continuing support of the EAC and our initiatives, as well as your inclusion of us in many important environmental issues. There's a lot of talent, a lot of interest, a lot of energy, and best of all, a lot of time in our committee, all of whom have a lot of passion for what they want to do on this island to keep it environmentally healthy. But tonight, I'm here to introduce to you another initiative we would like for the council to consider. Won't cost anything, just your approval of it, hopefully. I'm not going to present the initiative itself. I'm going to introduce the person who will, Elise Snavely. Elise is a resident of the island. She approached the EAC with this initiative on behalf of the Coastal Federation. We discussed it, and we decided that we would like to adopt this as one of our initiatives. It's very much like the Adopt a Highway program, where we just basically oversee it and, and get volunteers to help with the project. Let me tell you a little bit about Elise. She, as I said, lives here on the island, and like many people who have come here, came as a, and, and come to live here, came as a teenager and visited here every year from Virginia. And then she decided, she and her husband and small child decided to settle here. She has a BS in marine biology and a minor in oceanography from UNCW. She did an honors program in the salt marshes just south of Wilmington. She also worked with the NOAA Fisheries as a NOAA, NOAA Fisheries Observer in the North Pacific and the Bering Sea. She was an ESL teacher in China. She has a master's in marine biodiversity and conservation from the University of Ghent, the University of Bremen, and the University of Pierre and Marie Curie. She also did her thesis work on sediment processes in Australian mangroves. So Ms. Snavely knows that about which she's about to tell you. After she presents her initiative to you, I'm going to pass out the proposal that she gave to the EAC, and then we will come back to you at a later time and ask you to, for your consideration of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Elise Snavely?
Thank you, Margaret, and thank you, council, for hearing me tonight. So, I came to Oak Island. I've been here for the summers my whole life. But when I decided I was coming back to live in this area, I started looking into the coastal issues affecting North Carolina salt marshes. I'm sorry, I live at 7104 East Yacht, so on the island. So, salt marshes are very important to me. I did my undergraduate thesis in salt marshes, and I'm quite interested in how to protect these fragile ecosystems because they do face some threats. The North Carolina Coastal Federation has a program that they call Living Shorelines. So I was interested in these living shorelines, and I was very pleased to discover that there is a living shoreline at Veterans Park here on Oak Island. So in, I don't know, June, July, I went to go look at it. And I was a little disheartened to discover that it didn't look very good. So I was working, volunteering with the rec department. I got in contact with them. They got in contact with Public Works. And I was able to put together a cleanup with the Coastal Federation, and I took two other volunteers out there. And we did a trash pickup and kind of a basic maintenance of the oyster reef sill, where there are bags of oyster shells that are kind of in a line. I know it doesn't look like much, but it's very important to stabilize the marsh that's behind it. And the marsh stabilizes the upland areas of the park, basically. So this is very important. It needs to be in place. There don't need to be any oyster bags up in the marsh or down in the waterway, obviously. So, I did my cleanup in July, and I knew that it couldn't be the only one. So I enlisted the help of the EAC. I brought this matter before them. They are tentatively interested in overseeing this project, this living shoreline, much like they oversee the Adopt a Highway program here on Oak Island. And so, all that they, all that I need from you would be their approval, or to approve them, so that they have the ability to solicit volunteers, and we have permission to go out into the marsh. There are a few things that need replaced. There are some oyster bags that were destroyed probably during previous storms. The Coastal Federation has, I've had preliminary discussions with them. They've agreed to fund those bags. We just have to have the man-hours to put them in. There's also a sign at the Veterans Park that's badly faded. The Coastal Federation is willing to pay for this sign if the town requests it. I'm not exactly the right person to talk about that. But if you would grant your permission to the EAC, it would be a big step forward in having this proper maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Johnston?
My name's Steve Johnston. I live on Northwest 23rd Street. What I'm here to address is the paid parking issue. I have gone back and researched through some minutes of the meetings and things, especially back to the September 13th meeting, where you went through your contours of paid parking, a framework for discussion and decision-making. It's a little concerning to me that items 34 through 46 were not addressed, either yes, no, or revised. One of those was season passes for residents. I think we already have a season pass. We pay for parking. We, we get a decal, and we have parking. I think it's important that you think about the residents here in this parking initiative that you're trying to come forward with. You ask about, should low-speed vehicles to be included in paid parking? Well, absolutely. You have a low-speed vehicle, a golf cart parking at the end of Midland. Are you gonna do away with that and put paid parking in there? I certainly hope not. Unfortunately, at that time, Councilwoman Bell made a statement and said that if, if you were going to start giving free passes to different groups, including residents, then who would be paying? She said that was the bone of contention the last time they looked at the paid parking. I think the bone of contention the last time they looked at paid parking was due diligence wasn't done. It was jumped on that, hey, we want paid parking. You adopted, hired a company, and found out later that it was being run by felons, which didn't work out real well, I don't think. The other thing I'd like to bring forward is, they were talking about fishing, people that like to go fishing at night and, and park. Unfortunately, Mr. Kelly stated that the two-hour parking at night should address that. I don't think, if you fish like I do, I don't think two hours is gonna get you down there and get you done what you want to do. And I'm not trying to call attention. I sent each and every one of you a email and asked for your response. For those who did respond, I certainly appreciate it. And I have several other things I'd like to say, and obviously, I'm not going to get through it in, in this timeframe. I don't know if you'd grant me any additional time or not. But what it boils down to is cost. I don't think the residents and the taxpayers should be having to pay any extra monies to, to park here. I think we pay enough monies as it is. As was previously stated, we're in some tough economic times. And now is not the time to add to our pay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. If you have something written that you want to share with Ms. Stites, okay.
Mariah Brazil?
Good evening, y'all. My name is Mariah Brazil. I'm at 113 Southeast 15th Street. I'm not gonna ask you to listen to me for the next three minutes talk about my feelings on paid parking and eliminating right-of-way parking. You're well aware of my views on that from prior council meetings, as well as individual conversations I've had with you. Instead, I'm asking you to immediately halt any decision-making and do one of two things. Give some serious consideration to Dara Royal's plan, which has been submitted to council. She probably, I don't want to speak for her, but she might be speaking on that this evening. It is the best plan we've seen so far, and it's something I, I... It is the best plan we've seen so far and it's something I think we can really pull together and get behind. Alternatively, have you considered putting this to a vote by the people in the form of a referendum? If you, as a council... If you, as a council, make the decision to move forward with paid parking, this will not be a win for anyone. Instead, let the people decide. This issue is too large, too important, and way too divisive for you all to move forward without fully considering the input from your constituents. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Severe? Sorry. Hi, my name is Lisa Savage. I live at 217 Northeast 38th Street. I've been coming here my entire life. I lived here in the 70s and graduated from South Brunswick High School. Go Cougars! My family has owned a second vacation home since the mid-'70s. I realize that we can't stop obvious change. However, the direction the town is going in is not the desire of a large percentage of residents and property owners. The quality of our small-town beach life is diminishing each year. I emailed all council members on 10/23 to express that I was against paid parking and to inquire what is or will be done about the violators at the street ends on Yacht Drive, along with sending pictures of multiple violators. I requested a response as to how they intend to address the problem. Bill Kraft and John Bach were the only two that responded. Thank you both very much. The other council members never acknowledged my email. If paid parking is inevitable, as most believe it is, residents and property owners should not be paying the same amount as tourists and day-trippers. If we do go to paid parking, I would request that you consider Dara Royal's alternative goals and strategies that she emailed to council members on 10/30. I'd fully support her suggestions. With regard to the RFP draft that was published, it states that all town spaces, regardless of status, visitor, resident, property owner, or other, will pay for parking equitably and that the management firm will provide a recommended rate structure based on comparable operations in coastal communities. I would be interested to know...
Excuse me? Thank you.
I would be interested to know who thinks this is a best practice to allow the vendor you're obtaining quotes from to determine pricing. The rate structure and guidelines you wish to obtain should be outlined and requested in the RFP. The vendor has the ability to propose alternatives and recommendations, but to blindly leave it up to them is not in the best interest of the residents of our town. It seems some have lost sight of that and are only concerned with bringing in revenue, whatever the cost, to long-term residents and property owners. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Belinda Lee Stutz. I live at 238 Northeast 65th Street. Like Mariah, I'm not going to go over because a lot of you have already seen me and heard me, you know my opinion on paid parking. What I'm here to do tonight is to appeal to this council to follow their sense of duty. Your duty is to the citizens of this town. And by what we see here tonight, they do not want this paid parking. The majority do not want it. And from what I have seen and heard over the last couple of weeks since this RFP come out, those that were in favor of paid parking are now starting to change their mind because the reason they were in favor of it was to charge the tourists and the day-trippers and not the citizens. There is no, no contract that you can sign with a parking business that is going to allow each and every resident in this town to park for free. It will not happen. And a lot of people that were for paid parking were under the impression that no matter what, the citizens would not have to pay more and that that can't happen. There's no way in this economic world, in this capitalistic society, that that will occur. And I urge you, I urge you to listen, like Mariah said, to your constituents, to these people that voted you into office, to take care of our interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Trisha Lenwell and I live at, I have to think about this, I haven't lived there that long, 118 Northeast 68th Street. And I probably am going to cover some of the same things others have said, but I guess from a different perspective in the extent that I have not lived here long. I didn't even know about Oak Island until the last two years when we did buy a property here. I have not kept up with this. I'd kind of lightly looked at it and I saw that paid parking came up a number of times and nothing happened with it. So in the back of my mind, as I was focusing more on saving trees of my lot and everything, that I didn't really look at what was going on. I just assumed it would kind of be thrown aside like it apparently had been years before. But then I started seeing a couple of things and I said, wow, it's really starting to move here. And in fact, it seemed like, I looked at the October 4th meeting and I was watching that today and then I realized it was an October 11th meeting and it looked like there was a real morphing of speed between the 4th and the 11th. I'd taken all my notes based on the meeting from the 4th. So I was trying to listen to the 11th one right before the meeting, so I really didn't get to get through all of that, but I did see about the flex plan and the various agreements that were made. Also saw the RFP, looked like that was going to be put out there immediately. And I guess one of my concerns was, I did hear Mr. Bach say at the October 4th meeting about the beach management money. He said specifically that in a time when we are in a recession and in a time when we are seeing hyperinflation and there is no evidence that that's going to stop or that it's only impacting a small number of areas of the economy, it is actually hitting in every area. And I would say it looks like it's going to continue. And I thought Mr. Bach very wisely said, this is not the time to be moving ahead into something too quickly. And that he asked for tabling of the issue for 100 days so that you all could consider and get more time. Because honestly, government generally moves very, very slow. I've been in government, I know that. It can be a blessing, it can be a curse. But the thing with this is, I think, just like several speakers have said, there are people that had the impression that this was going to apply to day-trippers and other people, but it wasn't going to apply to us. I noticed also in the meeting, I guess with October 11th, that there was a designation spoken of, of residents and non-residents. And I've lived in community before in the mountains in North Carolina and you had summer people and you had winter people and you had weekend people and everybody paid the same dues, the same taxes, the same initiation fee. But a lot of us didn't use the services all that much. If I can go a little beyond, I'm sorry, I'm just nervous. Here, if you're a resident, you're paying taxes and you're paying the sewer bill and you're paying all the other things annually. But even if you're a person, you still have out-of-state tags.
Mayor?
You're paying those taxes too.
Our time has expired.
Okay.
Do you have another few points?
I'll just close this up. Can I just close it up real quick?
Please.
I was going to say, one of the things I heard was I have to pay $20 for the decal this year so that I could park and reserve parking. I find that figures such as $150, $180 annual pass or you can pay hourly, you can do this and that. I think that is something that no one ever thought. And somebody who has a very large income and they have a lot of discretionary income, it isn't that big a deal if you raise something from $20 to $150 or $180. But people in a limited income, each little penny can really impact them. And since the government and everything else is taking a lot of pennies, we've really got to consider everyone. And I hope that you all will put this aside for 100 days and give more time because once it goes to a request for a proposal...
Mayor, we have 15 more. Yeah, we've got to get everyone else their time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mike Forrest?
Most of my comments have already been said. I just want to make one point that sort of goes with the last speaker. In the original proposal, John Bach listed several things concerning safety, traffic flow. But item three, I think, speaks to what the previous speaker just said, and I'll read it verbatim. Paid parking creates an additional revenue stream to ease the burden of residents who pay to support continued beach improvement and preservation. I've not heard anything in the meetings that would ease our burden. If anything, like the previous speaker said, we're hearing three-digit fees for parking. That's not easing the burden. That's not what you started out with. I urge you to go back and look at that and follow your own directions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gerald Edwards?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm another one that's against paid parking. I think it'll be detrimental to residents, businesses, and visitors to our town. It'll require installation of hundreds of unsightly signs up and down nine miles of beach telling people, you can't park here. It's not likely to net the money to make it worthwhile. We had proposals a couple of years ago and it wasn't that much. Again, we're at a 40-year high on inflation. If there is ever a right time to do this, this isn't it. The draft RFP that was put out there, I'm not going to repeat what everybody else has said, but it talks about residents are paid just like everybody else. Residents shouldn't pay a dime. The stickers are 30 cents each. That's what the town pays for the decals. That's what the residents should pay if they pay anything. And the document that was put out there has a lot of word salad in it, kind of like some of our mainstream politicians. Talks about promoting traffic and pedestrian safety, compliance with town parking regulations. Well, we can make people comply with town parking regulations right now. Residents have not been told what any of the proposed profits from this thing would be used for. We already pay high taxes, 28 cents on the hundred. That's as high as any beach town besides Caswell Beach and Wrightsville Beach. Many of the beach towns are way less. We pay Oak Island taxes on our vehicles. Look on your registration. I pay $212 a year for two cars and a golf cart. Myrtle Beach, south of us, they do have paid parking, but their residents don't pay anything. They don't pay a dime. And, you know, this proposal is worded requiring residents to pay. It's not, it's not right. I respectfully ask for the council's consideration to can this proposal for paid parking altogether. Thank you very much.
Dara Royal, 216 Northeast 47th Street. Let me say upfront that I am on record as an opponent of previous paid parking proposals. After carefully listening with an open mind to all of the council discussion of the current contours in recent months, my opposition remains. In my opinion, the real problems with parking in the beach area stem from insufficient town decal parking spaces, inadequate parking ordinances, and a lack of enforcement. So I'm proposing seven goals and 21 strategies for your consideration as an alternative. Now, of course, I sent this to all of you in an email on October 30th, which has been mentioned before. The first, the number one goal is to preserve our unique way of life. Significantly increase the number of town spaces for town decal parking, no permits required for service, delivery, construction vehicles while on the job, properly maintain all on-street and off-street areas designated for parking, amend the parking ordinances to implement the 21 strategies, enforce the amended parking ordinances, and pay for enforcement with fines for parking violations and fees for town decal parking, supplement with accommodations tax fund, 45 if necessary. Decals would continue distributed percentage-wise across the, all of our accesses. Nominal fee of $15 for two years. That not only pays for the sticker, but it also pays for the sign and some other associated Fines would significantly increase, double, and there'd be penalties for late payment. Violations prioritized for towing would include private driveway blocking, which has been something that has been an issue for those folks who live in that area. But there are no system of additional permits for this or that. There are no fees on any timeframe for the parking spaces that are not town decal parking. It is a proposal offered in good faith. There are no devil in the details. It's simple, straightforward. To manage our parking resources, not to monetize them. And I respectfully ask for your serious consideration. Thank you.
Keith Brandon? Two more after this. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, staff, and the public. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who participated in the witch's ride a couple weekends ago, especially Carrie Weston-Lenzin and Kim Smith-Nagel, who organized the ride. The monies that were raised from this ride were donated to Oak Island Water Rescue and we do appreciate it. I'd also like to thank Second Wind for having a football tailgate fundraiser that also was a benefit for Oak Island Water Rescue. Now, on another note, as you may have seen, the current, the rip current flags are no longer being flown at the station. This is because the National Weather Service stopped forecasting rip currents till next year. While they're not being forecasted, it does not mean they're still not a danger. So we urge everyone to use caution if near or in the water. Last, I want to thank everyone who stopped by our open house on November 5th. We appreciate everyone who helped us celebrate our 25th year anniversary as a water rescue team. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Nancy Carroll. I live at 136 Northeast 33rd. Thank you for hearing me. Thank you for the work you've done on this. I know it's complex and I know there are... I know it's complex, and I know there are a lot of parts to it. But there's been a shift from the original idea of having visitors help pay for our cost, our beach maintenance. And honestly, I was shocked at how fast, in the last two meetings, everyone except for Bill Kraft was on board with residents paying to park. I don't even know, we lost sight completely of ideas that would solve our parking problems without having residents to park. And I guess the main thing I want to say is, don't forget you're representing, and you do not have the island's support for us paying to park at our beach. It's just not there. And if you're representing, which you should be, you're listening to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Donna Means. I live at Northeast 37th Street. I was very, very surprised that you intended on charging or you planned on charging residents and taxpayers to park at the beach. I have a tag, a residence tag, and many, many times I go down, not only can I not park where the residence signs are, but can't park anywhere in those parking spaces because there are cars from West Virginia, New York, they're parked all over the place. Those beach accesses should be for town residents only and not with us paying $150 to park. I just wonder, do you think that residents have bottomless pockets? Like you can, we pay an unbelievable amount for sewer, for water. We pay a tax for the hospital. You want us to pay this astronomical amount of money for beet tree nourishment? I live in the wooded section. Does it do me any good? No. I just wonder, how much do you think that we can afford? Our taxes are high. Everything here is high. I think the police need to enforce, sorry, enforce some of the rules that you have. Instead of just issuing warnings, for example, walking on the dunes, those people get a warning. Holden Beach, it's a $500 fine if you walk on the dunes. You know how many tickets they gave? Two? Okay? We need to make the people who are doing violations pay, not just warnings. The same with parking. If someone is parked illegally, give them a ticket, not just a warning. Let's see. It seems like the town is worried more about tourists than residents. So I hope that you will take all these things under advisement and come up with a different plan for parking. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Did you wish to speak? Is that, I was asked by Mr. Kraft that you had wanted to speak.
Yes, please. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. My name is Mike Lyons. I'm a resident here for six years and a homeowner here for almost 15. We live at 1609 Swain Drive on the west end of the island. I just like this gentleman over here. I'm an avid fisherman. I'm always on the beach, probably out there for about six hours this week. If I calculate the amount of money that I would have to spend for parking by having to spend, let's say, at least three or four nights every night during the summer and on the weekends, it's a lot of money. I only expect to be able to go through, and everybody should pay their fair share. The population of this island explodes in the summer. Those people that come here should pay for a portion of the services. It puts a tremendous amount of strain on the police officers, the EMS, the fire department. We should include those people paying for those services. We pay a lot in our property taxes. They should pay as well. Thank you very much.
Is that it? That's all.
Can we take a break, please?
If you could hold your comments, I'm happy to let you speak, but we're going to take a five-minute break.
Motion to public hearing.
I'm sorry?
Is the public hearing, after public hearing? That was everybody that was listed.
Everyone, we've spoke, we've heard from everyone that's listed. We've not heard from, can we take a break or not, Lisa?
I already put you on break. No, you don't need to move.
We could be here all night.
Bring the meeting back to order. We dismissed, there were a couple who had their hands in the air, apparently that they had not signed up to speak. If you have something radically different than the, what we've heard previously, I'm happy to give you time, but we do have a full agenda, so I beg your indulgence.
Madam Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Dan McNutt. I'm the owner of NC Parking Co. We had the pleasure to present a proposal in 2019. Ultimately, the initiative did not come to fruition at that time, and I've been, you know, looking forward to have the opportunity to revisit that. One thing that's been impressive to me since the original engagement in 2019 was how active you folks are here in the community and, you know, and the amount of engagement that you all kind of put forth and, you know, being vocal in your concerns and, you know, specifically to this issue around paid parking. We've had an opportunity to grow significantly and have continued success here in North Carolina since 2019, including municipal contract in Emerald Isle that we're going into our third year in. And, you know, our approach to specifically a community like Oak Island where it's a new initiative would be to cater to the island residents and really focus on meeting the needs of the island residents in our, you know, we would look forward to submitting a proposal that would include residents, you know, not having any fees to utilize the parking on the island. We are confident that, you know, based on our market knowledge and, you know, abilities to really put a program together that's more focused on providing parking solutions and opportunities also for those tourists, but for a fee to help go towards the wear and tear and the strain on the beaches here and all of the infrastructure in Oak Island. You know, we take tremendous pride in, you know, in the integrity with which we operate our business. There was a little bit of a misconception tonight, as mentioned, that we are a company of felons. I did address that back in 2019. I did have a personal misdemeanor arrest in 2016, but that's not indicative of us as a company as a whole. And, you know, this would be a personal opportunity for me to come, create value for Oak Island. We really look forward to having an opportunity to present a proposal. I would be willing to, you know, prove that that resident component is not necessary to charge them for parking, and we would be willing to operate for the first year at no charge to the community of Oak Island and implement the program and give everyone an opportunity to see the value and the benefits that would, that would come from the parking program.
Regrettably, your time is up, but we do look forward to receiving your proposal.
Excellent. Thank you.
My name is Kelly Smith, and I live at 107 Northeast 27th Street. And it is my pleasure to be here tonight, and I really appreciate you all listening. My family and I are permanent residents at Oak Island. We do not lease our home for two visitors. We are not in favor for paid parking on Oak Island. As you know, everybody's already said about the taxes and all that. I do, we do visit the beach frequently, and it's not always for one hour. It might be to walk out there, walk for 30 minutes, 40 minutes, and then come back, but we go frequently. Also, I want to volunteer with helping with the sea turtles. I want to volunteer with the other, other areas in our, in our, on our island. But if I have to pay to park to go do that, are you going to have that many more people that want to help do that? In your 2018 Parking Management Services request for proposals, it stated that, like somebody said, that we wouldn't have to pay if we were residents, and then now you do. And something else I noticed that in the contours of paid parking, the framework for discussion and decision-making strategies, I believe it was on slide four, number seven, it says, it says, "The town will work to develop off-island paid parking with a shuttle system." I don't know if anybody's noticed that. So that would be something else to have to pay for. I really, I do think we probably eventually will have to be doing paid parking, but I think our citizens that live here should not have to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Truly have something different to say?
Absolutely.
All right. And you're not a vendor? Do you represent a vendor? Do you represent a vendor? Thank you.
I had no intention, my name's James Dossett. I live at 118 Northeast 68th Street. I had no intention of standing up here until I just heard the mayor say, "We look forward to your proposal." So the RFP is out, and we're taking proposals now? You know, that's my question. Well, how can you be looking forward to a proposal if it has been determined?
That is, I was being optimistic, and I misspoke.
Are you, okay. It sounded like a done deal from where I was sitting. Thank you.
Pete.
Pete.
Number one, this paid parking issue is not consistent with our goal of being a small town.
Will you state your name and your address, please?
Sorry, Peter Key, 5007 East Yacht Drive.
Thank you.
Again, this, this paid parking issue, the consideration of this is not consistent with our goal as a community to remain a small town. It has no reflection of that. It looks like rightful beach. It looks like Carolina beach. It looks like Myrtle Beach, and I didn't move there. I moved here. From what I understand, paid parking no longer serves the purpose it was originally proposed for. This money can't be used for nourishment under the new plan, if I understand correctly. I am a true conservative who believes government should be small. This seems like government for government's sake. Since the funding from town parking, paid parking cannot be used for nourishment, what's its purpose? I'll tell you what I think it is. I consider it a double tax. I pay property tax for the beach accesses, and now I have to pay again to park old land I already paid for. As a conservative who is wary of government, I will have to wonder, will you lower my property taxes by the amount of revenue raised by paid parking? I bet they won't. What government takes, it never gives back. It is the legacy. Is this a legacy you want to leave for this island? The point is, I've been here except to go vote a few minutes ago, and I've heard a bunch of people from the town say they don't want this. You work for us. We don't want it.
Is this truly something radically different?
She's already spoken. She has already spoken.
But you have spoken.
You've already had three minutes. Mayor, we're going to be here.
Please not be rude.
I'm not. I'm just saying, I have one more concern of the town. I don't know if this is to talk to somebody else personally, but I do think, going back to the slide where they did, you know, save people and do CPR, but the town is lacking mental health training. I think that some of the people around here need mental health training because I was mistreated and I'm not.
Some of the people are you talking about?
I'm talking about police, fire.
First, thank you. Okay.
Thank you. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're done. Everybody agree with that? We're cool with that? We are not taking questions. You're welcome to ask any of us at a break. Thank you. Moving on, and thank you. I don't mean to be short, but it is a long meeting for, for everyone, and I just want to make sure we can get through our agenda. Council reports. Mr. Martin.
I will be brief to help speed along. Just a quick update. I serve as an alternate on the Regional Transportation Advisory Committee. We've had several meetings over the summer and into the fall. The quick update is, you've probably noticed the Highway 211 project seems like it's slowing down. It's just a normal development when they're building highways. Of course, clearing trees and plowing goes very quickly. Now they're moving infrastructure, so those large pipes you see and a lot of the tunneling they're doing, that's what's slowing that project down. That project's still on track and should be completed on time. And we have another meeting Thursday, and so hopefully there'll be some additional updates that maybe I can give you in December. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
I'd like to mention the fantastic events that were put on for Thanksgiving. I'm getting there already. Halloween, lots of kids out there. I went to most of them. It was a lot of fun to watch those kids. And I would also like to mention the improvements that are being made at Veterans Park. It's going to be really, really nice down there. And one more thing in closing. It's near and dear to me, would you put the men who did not return in your prayers? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft.
Yes. Four or five things, actually. Pete from Water Rescue stole some of my thunder, but I did go to Water Rescue's 25th Anniversary Gathering Saturday and met 34 wonderful volunteers who are trained, well-trained, certified, and anxious to help the people of Oak Island, our local people and our visitors. So I was glad to shake hands and hang out with the men and women of Oak Island Water Rescue. Secondly, the marshmallows, Edward Lovett, and the Alabama shirt. Saturday, they are going to have a Davis Canal Marsh cleanup like they do on a regular basis. They will be meeting at 9:00 on 125 Southwest 13th Street for anybody who wants to help them. And Edward told me to be sure to tell people there's going to be a cookout afterward, so there's food involved. Pete stole my thunder again. I wanted to thank Kerry Weston-Lenzon. I wanted to thank Kim Smith-Nagle. That witches' ride was a hoot. All the way up and down Oak Island Drive, the witches were in full force, having fun. The whole town was excited. So Kerry, I know you're here. Thank you very much for what you all did. That was fun. That was fun. Fourth, and then there's a fifth. Fourth, the Friends of the Park Foundation had their pickleball tournament, super tournament. People came from Fayetteville, Birmingham, Alabama, Charlotte, Raleigh, Leland. Some of our own people won a lot of the awards. Scott rallied, the bathrooms weren't unlocked Saturday morning, and all these people from out of town was wondering how come we didn't have bathrooms. 30 minutes before it started, Scott had bathrooms. That was a great weekend. The best thing that happened, though, was Lisa Horton, who works at Little Bits, she was one of the winners in pickleball, but I got to meet her daughter, Callie Horton. Callie is a grade school teacher in Brunswick County. Callie has cancer and is fighting cancer right now. She is a grade school teacher, and she wrote a book called ABCs of Oak Island, and it will be published soon, and it has seagulls and turtles and restaurants and piers and all the stuff you see around Oak Island, and this school teacher wrote a book during her recovery. So when you see that book on the shelves, Callie Horton, honor that lady. That is what I have.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
No report.
Congratulations to Water Rescue. I enjoyed the visit. Very impressive set of equipment, but more importantly, the esprit de corps that was evident in talking to the members of Water Rescue was very inspirational. And I agree with Councilman Blaylock, Veterans Park is being transformed. If you have a veteran in your family that you would like to honor, I would urge you to consider buying a memorial brick. I'm comforted going there when I go there to see my father, his brother, and his father, all involved in World War II, the entire Bach family at war. And so I memorialize that, and if you have a similar impulse, see the rec department. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I will reserve my report for the next meeting in spirit of time, and I will have a more robust report to provide you in December. Do you have something about the marsh cleanup? Do we know how much the bricks are?
On the bricks, if you go to the town's webpage, you can find it there. Rose Brom, or you can contact Heather down at the rec center, and we can get you the right person to be able to get those. I think they're $100. There's a form you fill out. Put everything on there, and then we get back to you.
Heather's here in the purple shirt. Wave your hand, Heather.
Heather's right there.
Thank you for letting us know. I appreciate it, Edward. Consent agenda, we have minutes from October 4th and October 11th. Is there a motion to accept the minutes for those two meetings?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. It's unanimous. There are no committee appointments this evening. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to start us with administrative reports?
Mr. Hatton, if you could come up, please. Going to give you a report on a few of the items in finance.
I've just got a couple of brief announcements from the finance department. We had applied for a grant from the North Carolina DEQ back in early spring, and after getting the $20 million grant, we thought we would probably not have a chance to get another one, but it was announced that we got another grant of $965,000 for beach management. So that always helps, that's above and beyond on the 20 million. As I've said up here before, if there's grant money out there, we go for it. All they can do is tell us no. So that was good news. We're happy to have them.
Kudos. Thank you very much for that.
And also, just an update on FEMA. FEMA works very slowly. You'll remember how long it's been since we had Matthew and Florence. I'm in the process now of working with a FEMA group in Raleigh to try to finalize our final money for Matthew and Florence. And this is mostly for the sand, so we can get some of that money back. So another day, oh, also, late today, our pension audit was accepted by the North Carolina Department of Treasury, so anytime we can get an audit accepted, that's always good.
Kudos.
Thank you, Dave.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Hatton.
Thank you, Dave.
I think Mike pulled up the BRIC webpage. Yes, so that's the information. If you go to the town's webpage, you'll be able to find it. The Lowes thing, we're going to say something about them, but we appreciate the gentleman bringing them up. They did do a lot of work down there for us and provided a lot of materials. Staff has been doing things. We've had contractors there. We had an event that was supposed to be there Friday, but with Nicole coming, I think they're moving that location, that's been changed. Or they, VFW is moving it to?
It's been moved to the Elks at 11:00 and a lunch to follow.
Okay. So we'll plan on doing something to celebrate the changes there at Veterans Park here soon to make sure we get that out to everyone. The rest of the items, we got the police coming up to give some reports. We've already had the fire, so I'll turn it back over to you.
Chief Morris.
He'll be, hang on. You're under old business.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wrong cue.
Sorry, chief.
Old business.
Yes, ma'am. Just turn it back over to you for old business.
Any other departmental reports?
No, ma'am, not this time, but they're online if they'd like to see them.
Excellent. Thank you. I got ahead of myself, my apologies. Old business. Consideration of a funding request from the Environmental Advisory Committee to fund promotional materials for the voluntary elimination of plastic straw use and an associated resolution. Who does this go to?
Councilman Bach.
Yes, the Environmental Advisory Group made a presentation to council in a public session. They've asked for two things, both of which I think are worthy of our approval. First, a resolution in an attempt to eliminate polluting straws and promote non-paper biodegradable straws. And they've also asked for a modicum of funding, $530, to initiate a voluntary campaign with local businesses for advertising material and actually providing them with demonstration straws that the businesses could use to see if they are effective and efficient. And I would recommend that we approve the motion. You have the detail in your packet, including their intended messaging.
So the resolution, is there someone here to accept it?
I don't think so. I think what we're doing is approving this and be able to get this started and get them the funds that they need.
Excellent. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve the Environmental Advisory Committee's request for up to $550 in funding for printed materials and sample straws and to adopt the associated resolution as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the presentation of end-of-season report on beach services, the parking and dune beach violations. Now your turn.
About time, chief.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, attendees. Tonight, what we'll do is go over our beach services unit, which we initiated for the first year this year. It has wrapped up. Second thing is to give you guys and the community a snapshot of the traffic enforcement, the traffic safety of our community, and then talk about our community resource officer, our new initiative with that. And then lastly, since this is wrapping up my first year, the mission and where we're heading with our local police department. So if we can key it up here to our first set of statistics. Okay. All right, thank you, Mike. Okay. All right. So you recall our beach services unit was an extension of the police department, where we started off with 13 employees. We ended up with 11 that worked a part-time basis, where they were, they patrolled the beach, 10 miles of beach, so that spanned from May 15th through October 3rd. We originally intended to end that after Labor Day, but however, it was, the service was extended due to the high numbers of visitors that were on the beach. And our patrols ended just slightly early due to Hurricane Ian. And the last action that was taken was the removal of the rescue tubes from the water safety stations. So I want to tell you about the employees before we go into the statistics, about the job that they done, day in and day out. The beach services unit played a vital role in the safety and also the enforcement of the town ordinances throughout the entire season for us. We had the beach services unit on UTVs seven days a week, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And then we also had a parking component, which was Thursday through Sunday. So as we wrapped up, we issued, the beach services unit issued 2,863 warnings and then also 1,364 citations throughout the year. Here's a breakdown of our daily operations and the statistics. Our sand dunes, we warned 800, we had 814 warnings, we issued 60 citations. Dogs off the leash, we warned 600, or discussed this with 637 people, 15 citations, glass bottles, 654, and then 11 citations. Our parking component, we warned 355 warnings and we issued 1,258 parking citations throughout the summer months. So the sand dunes, so we captured these statistics every day that beach services went out and patrolled the beach. They come back in and they completed a daily report. So if a beach services member saw someone, saw a five-year-old on the sand dunes, they approached the family and they asked them to not allow their child, not allow someone on the sand dune, that's where the majority of the warnings came from when it comes to sand dunes. We have folks that, of course, everyone knows that there's a ton of visitors that come here and they do not know what a sand dune is. And they walk all over it, and as soon as beach services approaches them, most of the time, they apologized, they were completely apologetic, and they would get off the sand dunes. The 60 that you see up there, I would say 100% of them was told once to get off the sand dunes, and they wouldn't get off, so therefore they were written a citation. So that's how we approached the sand dunes. The dogs off the leash, of course, that's fairly self-explanatory, the glass bottles, you know, we dealt with a lot of the visitors on the beach. You know, our parking enforcement, you know, our citations that we issued, and like I say, we had Thursday through Sunday that we enforced the parking. And it was parking in the roadway, the violation of town decals, handicap spot, parking near fire hydrants, parking on the sidewalk. So just a number of violations that our folks cited for each day that parking was enforced. Also, in addition to beach services, if the police, the officers that were on duty saw a parking violation, they also issued a citation as well. So we ended up with 1,258 citations throughout the summer. And the warnings also, we utilized the drone technology, which was helpful, and those are also considered into the verbal warnings as well. Because a lot of times, the drone operator, the drone pilot would identify folks that were on the dunes and hover the drone near them, tell them, you know, request them to get off the dunes, and of course, they would comply. So we use the drone technology as well. So overall, we'll move on from beach services. So I've received a tremendous amount of positive support from the community, from visitors, from the, you know, as a result of the beach services unit. It's that consistent presence that we were after. That was one of our objectives, is to have that presence on the beach, day in and day out. And I believe we reached that benchmark. Critical information on current safety conditions, we flew the beach conditions flag off the UTVs. We, about halfway through the season, we put the beach conditions placards on the UTVs that would represent a red day, green day, yellow day, beach warning signs to further educate the folks that were on the beach. And we've done a lot of education and enforcement of town ordinances, and we utilized our two UTVs. And of course, this was fairly easy to keep up with. We rented two UTVs this go-around, and they were both brand-new, so we had a total of about 8,000 miles that we traveled up and down the beach throughout the summer, and our total runtime was approximately 1,300 hours, you know, throughout the year. So overall, overall, there is, we learned a lot this first year. As we go into the second year, next year, we will take that knowledge and modify just a few things to further improve on our initiative. And some of those we have discussed is not only having two UTVs on the beach, but having three to have that stronger presence along the beach next year. During our holiday weekends, of course, you know, there's thousands of people on the beach, and you have one person operating the UTV. We've considered putting two, all two members on the UTV, so that would give us a presence of having six members on the beach over the holiday season. As they patrol, we can hand out, next year, we can hand out printed educational material, and we have discussed with Mike Emery having a scan code on the UTVs where folks can scan a code and get educated on the ordinances and our beach rules. And, you know, just some housekeeping on, to further mark up our UTVs so they're labeled as an official Town of Oak Island vehicle. So there's some of the takeaways that we had. We look forward to next year, you know, moving to next year and growing from what we learned this year, and I think that it will, we will improve and continue to provide that consistent service to our town each and every day through our beach services. Okay. So I'm going to change gears away from beach services and discuss our traffic safety. We had a total of 184 since January 1st of this year. We had 184 traffic accidents. 51 of those, or 27%, occurred in parking lots. Fifty-one of those, or twenty-seven percent, occurred in parking lots. A, a total of two thousand and two hundred and fifty-four traffic stops were performed since January first. And there's a, there's a breakdown of what we have written citations for. Now, these are all police officers stopping cars with the speeding, the driver's license violation, stop sign, the twenty-seven BWI arrests, fifty other traffic-related violations, almost nine hundred verbal and written warnings throughout the year. So here's a breakdown of, of our traffic citations. As you can see in Zone One, that is the western part of the island. Zone Two is, is the central area, and Zone Three will be the eastern end. So Zone One, we had seventy-eight traffic citations that were issued. Zone Two, there was fifty-seven, and Zone Three was a hundred and eighty-four. So our speed, our speed violations in Zone One, we had three hundred and fifty-one violations. And I think it's important to note here about our speeding, and I want to further elaborate on that, our speeding complaints. Three hundred of those speeding tickets were on Middleton at the bridge. So three hundred that was written. And on Beach Drive, another fifty-one was written. And that's on our, on our west side of our island. In the central, central area, Zone Two, there was eight, there has been eight speeding violations written on East Oak Island Drive the entire year. And to follow that up, Zone Three, there was a hundred and fifty-three, and that's right there at Country Club. As folks are coming off the bridge, there's been a hundred and fifty-three citations written there. So there, coming onto the island, crossing over both bridges is where we have our heaviest speeding issues. And we are trying to address that each and every day. So there's a breakdown of our speeding, you know. In town, in the heart of Oak Island, and we're going to further talk about that in just a minute, you'll, you'll see a breakdown of some things. We, we don't have as large a speeding problem as we do coming onto the island. So to gather these statistics, in May, the town purchased our speed trailer. And over this past summer, we have deployed the speed trailer into fourteen different locations. And a few areas of concern here, and I just wanted to break these down. Yacht Drive, we, we had it on Yacht Drive from May twenty-third to the May thirty-first. The average volume of vehicles that traveled was nineteen hundred and forty-six vehicles per day and an, with an average speed of twenty-four miles per hour. And that's a thirty-five mile per hour zone. From Northeast Fifty-Eighth to East Oak Drive, from August first through the tenth, we had an average of nine hundred ninety-five vehicles per day and with a estimation of, or twenty-one miles per hour as an average speed. Rolling down to Middleton Avenue from September first through the thirteenth, there was an average of almost six thousand cars coming onto the island each day with a average speed of forty-six miles per hour. So what we're going to do with this information, where we deploy these, where we deploy the speed trailer, we're going to make all the locations available online. So if folks live on Seven, if we have the speed trailer on Middleton, or if we have it on Yacht Drive, and someone has a concern, they will have a place to go, and they can actually look at the data that was collected from the speed trailer. So we're in the process of making all of that information available on the town website. Another, another initiative that the Police Department has started participating in this year is the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program. This program promotes efforts to reduce traffic crashes and fatalities in North Carolina. And if you remember, one of our first initiatives this year was over Memorial Day, when we had the big checkpoint across the bridge. So that was part of the Governor's Highway Safety Program. So this year, we have participated in, or we have held thirty-five traffic safety checkpoints in Oak Island, and which has resulted in six hundred and ten citations for various traffic violations. So on occasion, we get a request for a stop sign, for speed bumps, speed humps. So what we are doing in response to that is crafting a quote-unquote "traffic calming" policy. So when someone calls and requests a speed bump, or they request a, a traffic calming measure, then the town has a formal process to go, go through to reach, to reach that. So we are, the Police Department is working with Mr. Kirkland and the Planning Department to create, to create this calming policy. And we'll go through it here. It's a, it's a safety measure, can include speed bumps, stop signs, and other devices. Each request will be thoroughly evaluated and jointly reviewed by the Police Department and the Planning Department. And a standardized criteria will be created and applied to all requests in order to provide equal service based on facts and not perception. So we will have a foundation of what we do and where we can work. And some of that criteria will be, if we have it on, let's just say, for an example, we have it on Seventy-seventh Street, northeast Seventy-seventh Street. You know, one of the criteria would be, how many cars are traveling on Seventy-seventh Street? If it doesn't reach a certain criteria, then it doesn't get a check in the box. So there'll be a criteria that is evaluated on every sing, every single request. And that's in process. So further changing gears, the Police Department initiated the Community Resource Unit back three months, three months ago. We're on August fifteenth. Officer Victor DeNoble was named as our Community Resource Officer. I'm very pleased at how this program has, has gained a lot of success over the, over this past summer with the contributions made by the community. The support that we've got from the community has just been, has been very overwhelming. And so you know that the Police Department is one hundred percent dedicated and committed to community-based policing. So in, in the three months since we started the program, we have hosted or attended forty events, including Coffee with a Cop, where that gives folks the opportunity to come out and talk to myself, or talk to someone at the Police Department over what issues that you may have, or you just want to talk and talk about the ballgame, or whatever you want to talk about. But that's just a way for us to participate in a community outreach where we can build and cultivate relationships with our community. We had the first Dutchman Dinghy Dash, where it was a complete success. We had about two hundred folks that showed up to watch. And I think we ended up having fifteen boats to participate in the race, and which was a lot of fun, and that, that we all had. We've participated in the Spooktacular Halloween event that was put on by the town and the Recreation Center. And we, we have participated, not only, and I want to say about the Veterans Park renovation, you know, the town participated in that Parks and Recreation, Public Works, had a hand in that. So that was a combined town effort along with our partner with Lowe's that was able to complete that renourishment. And we've established faith leader, leader meetings. And that's, that we, we have actually had two where the islands, or the town's faith leaders are meeting with the Police Department. And first, first and foremost is forming relationships, because if something happens with someone, our faith leaders and our community are our community leaders. And we want that relationship with them to solve problems. If we, if we can, if we can solve those problems from the lane that we're traveling in. So I think that's been a success. We have, we've met twice. We have a, an upcoming meeting here this month. And hopefully, we'll be able to help some fa, help families in need through this outreach program. And we've participated in all the concerts throughout, throughout the summer season and with a increased police presence. So our Community Resource Officer, Officer DeNoble is very committed to the community. I'm very pleased with where we're at with him. And Officer Noble didn't know this when he took the job, but he also got a collateral duty when he got it, and that's being the, the department recruiter. And as, as you know, as we listen to the news once, at least once a week, twice a week, that there is a shortage of not only police officers, firefighters, but emergency workers, nurses, and hospital staff. So we, for a lack of a better terms, you know, we had to change up our strategy about how we were hiring and attracting employees at the Police Department. We, we were, we, the town increased the starting salary back early this year, which was a great help. And we ran through, we ran through that cycle, and we got where we have open positions, and we're, we just wasn't getting applicants. So we regrouped with the town manager, with Mr. Kelly, and presented this, this idea to him, which a lot of agencies across the United States have adopted this, this here, where you actually pay office, or pay people to go through the basic law enforcement training upfront. So how we approached it as a town, we did not bring those, we have not brought those employees on as full-time. They are part-time employees with no benefits. However, we have had, since we launched this program of three weeks ago, we have had a huge success with attracting new, new folks coming in. And I can, I can stand here tonight and say, I think if everybody makes it through a background check, you know, we'll be, we'll be in good shape. So we, we will fill, we will fill our positions through this new, this new program that was initiated. So that's, that's been a great help. Everybody has worked together to push this information out. You know, it started with the town administration allowing us to do this. Mike Emery has done tremendous amount of work about pushing this information out, talking to people. Officer DeNoble is engaged in conversation, countless conversations every single day with people. And I think we ended up, so far in the past two weeks, I think we got fifteen, around fifteen applicants where we had none. We had zero applicants. And this program here has got us fifteen. Now, out of those fifteen, I, I think we'll take five. So we will put those in, and hopefully, we'll be on track to be fully staffed about mid-next year, because they've got to go through school, they've got to go through BLET, and then we, we, then they'll graduate. And when they graduate, if they graduate, then we will bring them on as full-time employees. And they've already, already went through a comprehensive background investigation, a drug screening, and then they'll have to go through just a few, few more testing processes. But then we'll bring them on as full-time employees. So we changed up that strategy. It's seemed, it seems to be working right now, and we'll, we'll stick with, we'll stick with that one. Okay. I think this will be the last, last part of my presentation. I know this is a little long-winded, but I'll make it quick. So I wanted, I wanted to give you an update on the direction that your Police Department was heading. And we have a renewed mission statement that outlines, "The mission of the Oak Island Police Department is to serve and protect the community by delivering professional police services. We will enforce the law, ensure the safety of the community, and protect the rights of all citizens by policing with fairness and integrity." That's our mission statement that we have drafted at the Police Department. So our goals, our Police Department goals for 2023 is to continue our community outreach about being visible and accessible to our community. Not only our community, but committed to beach safety. Our traffic enforcement initiative. We are, we are looking maybe on putting, assigning make one, maybe two personnel to a specialized traffic unit that focuses on our traffic-related problems or issues that may, may come up. So we're looking at a few things, but that's a priority of mine, is traffic enforcement, our community-based policing, building our relationships. And the last thing is to strengthen our department's foundational structure. And what I mean by that is, we're in the process of complete, we're almost completed updating our policy and procedure manual, which we will have, I think, eighty to ninety specific policy, procedure, policies and procedures for the Police Department. We're in the process right now of, where the town purchased new body and in-car cameras. Last year, of course, with the supply chain issues, they just, the cameras just came in. So we're in the process of implementing, implementing those devices to the officers. And probably the biggest project that we're going to be working on over the six months to reinforce the structure is our computer-aided dispatch that we will now have in all patrol cars. And computer-aided dispatch is a vital part of officer safety, serving the community, sharing information. And I have been an advocate for that. I went to Mr. Kelly with this several months ago, and we sit down, we talked about it. Our police officers will be in line for, are in line with all the deputies in Brunswick County and most of the police officers across Brunswick County with the technology that we have with computer-aided dispatch, our body cameras. So our Police Department, you know, is, when it comes to technology, you know, I, we, we are at an adequate level once we initiate these programs. And of course, I just talked to, talked to you about the finalization of the, the paid recruit program. So that will, we will continue that project, you know, through on and hope to be successful with recruiting the best officers that we can for our community. And I think that wraps it up for me, so I'll take questions. I know.
Hi, Chief.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure it goes without saying, the paid recruiting, training process, they, they owe us a couple of years after we pay for their training.
That's a good point. So what the, what they are doing is, or what we're doing, they are signing a three-year contract. When, early on, before they sign the background, we're having conversations with them, and they know that, and the prospective employee understands that, and they signed that three-year contract before we move forward.
Good deal. On the sand dunes, eight hundred and fourteen warnings, sixty citations. And I understand that's because people come here, they didn't know even what a dune is, what have you. Is that because of lack of signage?
So I think the way that it's fell out is, those warnings, if anyone got close to the dunes, you know, if they were a foot up on the dunes, or they were six inches, we approached them and asked them to move. I think there is a, it's an identification problem. It's an issue of, all right, here's a dune, here's the beach, as the two meet. Because some, you know, some of our, our dunes are a long sloping angle down to the beach, and people get on the bit, keep, people get on the dunes. And a lot of times, they, they, there's nothing malicious that they're doing. Sometimes they are. I don't, don't get me wrong. Sometimes there's some malicious playing and throwing, and, you know, digging in the, you know, digging in the dunes. Overwhelmingly, you know, folks get on the dunes, and they don't know better. Don't know any better.
And lastly, parking, three hundred and twenty-five warnings, twelve hundred and fifty-eight citations. Bravo, sir. Thank you.
That was, you know, for the, for the amount of employees that we had on parking, and that, from Thursday to Sunday, you know, if someone, if there was a violation, our, our parking enforcement done their best.
Does the drone operator, besides checking for people on the dunes and missing people, does, do they also check for the blockage on the strands?
The emergency access areas, yes. Yes, he does.
And that's a Thursday through Sunday for them too?
Friday through Sunday, if I remember correctly. Yep. We had a weekend presence. Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I just had a quick question. You'd made a note that for improvement for Beach Services, you'd like to have more visibility or markings, or, or, can't remember the exact. or markings or, or, can't remember the exact wording, for the UTV. I remember last year we wanted to purchase UTVs and we ended up having to lease, I think, one, right? Because there weren't, there wasn't any inventory. Are we, are we going to be able, has, has that inventory improved? Has the supply chain got us to the point where this upcoming season, we'll be able to purchase the UTV so we can properly mark it and, and get it identifiable out on the beach?
So we have, we started working on that about two months ago, about securing UTVs for next year. It's hard on a UTV each, on, on that beach, every single day. It takes a toll on the mechanical parts of it. We actually had one of the brand-new UTVs break down on us within a month. Then we had to back up. So we had, we had some issues, even with new UTVs. So the approach that, that we have discussed at this point is renting the UTVs for next season. We have already secured those UTVs for next season on a rental basis. Keep it buying one and keeping them long-term. I mean, that's a, that's a huge expense for maintenance and, and having issues with them. So that, that's been, you know, our experience with them this year. And the police department, we have two UTVs. They are close to end of life and they're about four years old and we spend, you know, we have, we have spent considerable amount of money to keep them going. And, because that's what we have and we're trying to make them last as long as possible. So it's, it's not like a UTV in the, let's say, the western part of North Carolina where you don't have sea spray spraying all over those UTVs every single day. And I think it takes a toll on them.
But the rental company allows us to do some sort of temporary?
Yes.
Markers or signage?
Let me, yes.
Something that's removable at the end of the season?
That's correct. And we will fully mark these UTVs next year with the town logo. It'll be marked Beach Services Unit, along with the beach warning signage that we flew this year. So there'll be no question, you know, next year about that. And, you know, to follow up on that, about halfway through the year, you know, we had the beach signage on the UTVs, which had the town logos on those. We just thought we could further improve that if we had some more markings, markings or decals on there that identified it as an official vehicle.
Chief, you have hit the ground running from the day you got here. And you've achieved some excellent results and I just want to say, I'm sure counsel will join me in saying kudos and thank you for the work that you've done, for everything you've achieved. And please pass that along to your staff, because I know you've not done that alone.
Well, and I certainly will, I'll pass that along. And not only do I want to recognize the entire police department, but it takes, it takes Mike Emery, he's a big part of our pushing out the information. It takes support from the town administration, you know, from David Hatton to, to Debbie Lasic HR, because we are constantly dealing with Debbie day in and day out about hiring folks and, you know, she's been wonderful to deal with. So it's been a team effort and I, I want that to be first and foremost. But thank you for your comments.
Chief, I'd like to compliment you on the job you've been doing. As they say, on the street, the word is, you're doing a great job. And that's, that's really where it counts. And the community policing is a really important aspect. I'm glad to see you highlighting that. I do have one concern, however. I've made the suggestion to your community resource officer, when you're having coffee with the cops, if you would add donuts, I think you would get a lot more response.
Well, every time we have coffee with a cop, it's been in a donut shop and you show up, meet up all the donuts.
You should have had more donuts.
Anyone else?
Well done, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is consideration of approving requests for proposal for paid parking spaces. Mr. Bach?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me begin by acknowledging all of you who are still with us. I appreciate your passion. I appreciate your, your commitment to preserving our town as something unique. And for that, we're grateful. We, as your representatives, understand that some issues, by their very nature, produce this kind of a response. I'm not surprised at all. And I think that one of the things that we've come to the realization about is that the town that we had 10 years ago, 15 years ago, is no longer there. Whether we like it or not, growth, explosive growth, explosive tourism, post-COVID responses to the beach have overwhelmed us. It is simply the case that we cannot be self-regulating. We need to have a strategy. We need to have a plan. And that's what contours was all about. Yes, we've looked at this issue before and it left much to be desired. So in designing this process, I polled each and every council member and tried to lay out all of the steps. Of course, it's impossible to do that. And it's impossible to solve complex interrelated problems easily. They just aren't solved that way. This is the beginning of the first stage. And yes, there's a lot of noise out there. My email has blown up and there are a lot of misconceptions too. So let me, let me start with the goals, because they have not changed. Safety, public safety and order needs to be imposed. The chief statistics speak to that. That's what he could do with his manpower stretched to the breaking point and with a creative adaption this year to have traffic management. But it's still very much an issue. And we need to have a plan because we're continuing to grow and we're continuing to have growth off the island. And yes, that's going to impact us in a very, very significant way. Doing nothing, which is what we've done in the past, kick the problem down the road, we'll just stay who we are, we'll let it go, it'll be laissez-faire. That only works six months of the year. It does not work in a tourist town. That's the reality. Whether we like it or not, that's the way we have to deal with it. We have to confront this problem. So public safety, preservation of property rights. We have residents who live there in the beach roads. And when you talk to them and when they talk to me and when they complain, their complaints are legitimate. People are abusing their property rights in every manner speak, speakable, whether it's the hoes or dogs or people actually parking on their lawns. I mean, that is a common occurrence and we need to stop that. That's, that's not right. That's loss of quality of life. And yes, we need a revenue stream. There's been a lot of talk about that. Let me correct that misconception. In a few minutes, we're going to adopt a resolution presented to Representative Miller. We expect that we'll get discretionary authority to, if we opt into paid parking and if we have revenue, that we can determine the greatest need, whether that's infrastructure, tax To be decided. But it is not the case that it's self-perpetuating funding for more and more parking, because who would want that? We wouldn't want that. The other towns that have it don't have that. They all have a resolution. So that's a misconception. Should the burden be placed on visitors who don't have a stake in the community? Yes, absolutely. How do you do that and have a viable system? That's the question. This is the beginning of the first stage. So no final decisions have been made on anything. That's not true. Yes, we've discussed them. And I might add, in a three-month, very public, very transparent way, and there are differences of opinion on some things. And there are some preliminary profiles that we've said, okay, yeah, we have to solve part of the right-of-way problem to have paid parking and safety and order and preserve property. That's essential. But we've also said, and this is another misconception, we're not doing away with the decal system, the reserved parking system. We're increasing the number of spaces and we may increase that further. And here's a question that we can't answer, which is why we need to send out an RFP. What is the algorithm that the parking companies are using, professional companies? If you had 300, 350 spaces dedicated to residents at the current discount rate, does that work? Is it the case 15% of those residents who have a sticker use it 15% of the time over six months? I don't know, but I'm, I suspect something in there is already a proven demonstrable algorithm that the companies have. So somebody said, well, it can't be done. I say, it can be done. We, we need to look at it and see if we can make it work. I appreciate, as I say, I really do appreciate your passion. But I can tell you, a year ago, three of us were running for office and we all ran on managed growth and all supported paid parking. And the last time we were in this room and we actually were at the moment of decision, Councilwoman Mendel said, why don't we poll? And the poll was 51-49. And it's going to be the same way if we have a sensible program. But the rewards need to be considered. The only way we're going to know is to put out an RFP. That tests the viability and maybe we have it wrong. Maybe we can't do it. And maybe we'll, we'll be the isolate, the only community without it. And that will have implications, because we'll be free, we'll be available, and everyone else will have a different system. I don't know. I think we need to test this and we need to continue into February if we have to. And maybe at that point, we don't have an answer or maybe we do. I think what we want to have is a policy, if we can get it, that creates intrinsic value for the residents, preserves their property, increases traffic safety, creates a revenue stream that God knows we can use. We have major infrastructure needs and roads, it's, we can go down the list. I don't necessarily want to buy more sand, certainly not with this. But again, we would have options, options we choose here. Are there questions that we have not taken on? Yes, of course. That's another reason to put out an RFP. What do you do with 801? Do you hire a parking attendant for events? Do you issue coupons? Do you submit a list to the vendor and he scan? We don't know the best approach. The vendors have done that before. They know how to do it. What do we do with the rec center? I mean, there are a lot of things that we need some professional advice. That doesn't mean we're going to accept it. It just means it helps sharpen our thinking. We have not, to my knowledge, discussed fees. People throwing numbers around, we've avoided using numbers because we don't know. We've avoided forecasting. Are we looking at the available public comparable data? Sure. So you can look at the neighboring communities and you can see a range from 500,000 to, you know, in one case, $4 million. Where would we fall in terms of net proceeds? I don't know. And I can't answer the question of, is it worth it? It's always no. That's the reason for the RFP. It is not final in any way. It is simply, okay, here are some estimates, some recommendations, here are some mechanics that you can consider. It may be the case that we don't like them. And if the mechanics don't protect our residents, all of us up here. Our protectors, we're stewards. We get that. And frankly, to say we're not cognizant, I don't think that's fair. We can, we can disagree about the best approach here. We can be passionate about how we solve problems. That's fine. I, I, I think that's a good place to be. What we can't do is ignore the problems. That doesn't work. And we've done that for a long, long time. We did it with beach re-nourishment, we're doing it again with parking. We need to come to an answer. Either it's not tenable and we can't do it? Okay, I accept that. And we'll, then we're going to do whatever Band-Aid we can put on the problem. Or can we find a solution? That's what this is about. And I know there's a lot of noise. That's, as I said, natural. It's okay. We'll get data from the vendors, assuming they bid. We'll look at it. It'll help us to begin to make some other tentative decisions. That'll, that'll all be in public. You'll get to hear it, you'll get to be part of it. And then we'll see. And we'll have a much clearer sense of the risk and the rewards. Without that, we can't act without that kind of data. We have to have it. So I'm happy to give the alternative point of view, because I think we have an obligation to manage the town as effectively as we can, protecting residents' rights certainly, but also being financially solvent. It's a, it's a major issue. Someone alluded to the CRC. Yes, I did say 34, $40 million every six years? I don't see how that can be sustainable. But I'm willing to listen. I'm willing to hear whatever plan is going to come forward. I'm not going to dismiss it out of hand, but I, I am skeptical. And in like manner, I understand your skepticism. That's healthy. Okay. If we find something we think is viable, it's confirm an external vendor to some degree, we can shape it the way we think our residents would be best served, we'll bring it to you. If not, we'll walk away. So one other misconception, this equitability clause, yes. Thank you for all of your email. I read it a second, third time and I thought, wow, this is boilerplate language. You know, it's the kind of thing that's in every proposal. We have never said we're going to treat our residents the way we treat visitors, ever. But yeah, we're going to, I hear you. Thank you for that. I've asked Mr. Kelly to take it out, to strike that, because that doesn't reflect what we're trying to do. So again, thank you for your keen interest and your passion. Have a little patience. We're at the beginning and we don't know what the end is yet, because we don't have enough data. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Since we're talking RFPs and?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. So what we did, we heard the public's comments, we heard everything coming in before. So we did talk about the all users of town spaces regardless of status. We are retracting the D item, both sentences from that. E will now become D. We'll have the clerk make those changes before the proposal of council so chooses to approve. And it would be stating recommended rate structure shall provide for seasonal, weekly, daily, and hourly options. I believe that is a, what we need to do to move this forward. Also, the timeframe that we have for this, the RFP would require proposals to be received by November 22nd. Council will meet with a couple of the potential vendors, if they would like to have oral presentations. That would be a public meetings as well. We would set those up probably in the first week of December and then bring this back to council on December 13th at the regular meeting to discuss the RFPs, if you chose to do that here in a minute. If that is the schedule that can be adopted with this, that's how we would proceed going forward. Even at that time, we would not have rates or anything established. It would go to the January retreats when we talk about fees and rate structures. And then the numbers will be discussed to see after we review everybody's comments, vendors' comments, recommendations, and then give council time to review those and process that, even before we would then be able to look at the fee schedule or rate schedule at the January retreat. So that's the timeframe that staff has presented in the packet.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. And thank you, Mr. Bach. Before I ask for a motion, I, I just want, I'm hopeful that the community of which I'm a part, I'm a resident on a fixed income, like many of you, that you recognize the thoughtfulness with which this project has been approached and has been explored. It's been fully transparent. I know there are rumors, we can't stop those if we didn't generate them. But this group has been very, your council and staff have been very thoughtful. This is the most structured and well-laid-out effort that I've experienced since living here. And I can assure you that, under my watch at least, it won't be the last. You know, we committed to working on your behalf and I hope you trust that we are. Decisions won't be made. Decisions won't be made without your input, but it's important that we also, as your council, that we look forward and not today and not yesterday, but that we look forward and ensure the town's viability and our quality of life. Those are important to all of us. We share those goals. So having said that, is there a motion for the RFP?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Second. All in favor?
I'd like to have discussion first.
Okay.
Or we can vote if you want to.
It's up to you. Will it impact the vote? Let me just say that.
It'll impact my vote. This is hard, and I wrote it all down, and I want to be agreeable. And I know my colleagues have studied and done their homework, and this is what they've come up with. But so far, what I see is more problems than solutions. So what can we do with what we know? We can do our due diligence, and we can properly represent our townspeople. We can fight for details and fight for answers early instead of late. Are we creating hardship frustrations with no realized benefits? Have we done our due diligence? Have we done our research? So before I tell my position, I'm going to state, the townspeople have told us what they want. They told us, when they voted last time, they did not want a sand assessment. They told us that loud and clear. We figured out how to not come up with a sand assessment. A whole bunch of people tonight ate dinner early so they could run down here and be heard. They didn't help their kids with their homework so they could run down here and be heard. We heard them. And what I heard them say was, "Slow down, do your due diligence." Next month, I'm going to bring up the term, because next month, the rubber hits the road. I'm going to bring up the term capacity management. But right now, I want to say, where are the specifics? What's the detail? What does the town look like before we do paid parking, which is now? What does the town look like after we do paid parking? Who's it affecting? What does it affect? So I still want to know specifics and details.
I think that's what Mr. Bock said. Isn't that what you said, Mr. Bock, that we're going to do the, get the act together and understand what we're dealing with?
That's exactly the point of this. I don't disagree with Councilman Kraft's desire for more data. We'll have it in December.
Let me address one thing, though. Last month, we voted four to one. Let's do tiered parking. Let's come up with two tiers. It went through. It was voted through. We still haven't said, is that $20 for a decal? Is that $150 for a decal?
We're not going to know that.
We're not going to know that, because we haven't done our due diligence. So one of these days, we're going to come up, and we're going to say, now it's time to determine how much a decal costs. Well, Bill, you know, back in October, we voted, and it went through to have tiered parking. Now we've been told the tiered parking is $150 and $250. Oh, no, I don't want that. But Bill, we voted on that in October. I need to know specifics before I can vote yes.
I have a question, Mayor. Please.
So, put the question back on the floor.
Yes.
Motion's made to do the RFP.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I abstain.
He's abstaining. Okay. And I, that's fine, because I respect that, and I think we do need data. And if we don't have it, feel free to raise that again.
So, four to one. And I just want to reiterate...
That was five to zero.
The count is a yes.
The abstention is a yes.
An extension is a yes. Yes, thank you very much for that correction. We're not moving forward without numbers. That would be idiotic.
Yes, we are.
Well, no, but wait. This is a point in the process. We're not approving anything. We're soliciting input. It's a point in the process that's needed. We need the input of people who do this for a living in order to validate some of the ideas that have been proposed and/or to show us where we can do work more effectively. I don't want to pay $150 and $250. I would never lobby for that, ever. So please, give us a little more time and effort to work on the town's behalf, to get these back. This is part of our learning process. You will know fully what the program is before anything is voted on. I can assure you that. Before any final decisions or commitments are made, you will know what's being proposed. Is that fair? Just give us a little bit more room to do what you've asked us to do, which is our due diligence. Again, I respect the effort that's been put forth. It's been thoughtful. This is a very complex problem. It's required that we take it apart in pieces to examine different aspects of it, because it is too momentous, it's too huge to tackle all at once. So we've done it in elements much to John's efforts. We couldn't have considered this without it. And it is incumbent upon us, your council, to be able to tell you where the value is or isn't in paid parking, once we've collected the data, have run some numbers, and we know what that is. We heard you loud and clear tonight. I wrote down pages of names, addresses, and what everyone said. I've answered as many emails as your, as my colleagues here, as I possibly could. I know I haven't been able to get to everyone. But just, just give us a little more wiggle room, a little more effort, and if it doesn't make sense, we will not force it forward. Of that, I can assure you. Fair? Thank you very much for your faith in us. Next on the agenda is consideration of amendment, Section 28.5 of the Code of Ordinances About Electric Bicycles. Mr. Kirkland, is that you?
No.
No. This is the clerk.
Is that, I'm sorry?
Lisa.
Lisa.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This ordinance was adopted last year by council, and...
Shh, excuse me.
This ordinance was adopted last year by council, and it had a sunset clause whereby the ordinance would automatically expire this year in November. We've checked with the police department. There haven't been any issues, so staff just recommended removing the sunset clause and leaving the rest of the ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say thing.
All in favor? That is five to zero, unanimous. Thank you very much. Sorry I missed that cue, Lisa.
Oh, no, no problem.
Discussion and review of council's fiscal year priorities. For the sake of time, I have asked Mr. Kelly to address the first priority, public safety and accessibility, this month. And then the subsequent two months, we will get updates on parks and rec, where we'll have more to share with you, and beach preservation. So, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Last year during the budgetary cycle, we came up with some three items, as you addressed, public safety, parks and rec, and beach preservation. Tonight is public safety and accessibility. We've had the fire chief here that's gone over some of them. Police chief has addressed a few of the other ones. But there was five objectives that came out of this. The fire chief and police chief will explore effective programs used by other emergency services agencies to create a comprehensive outreach program to citizens and visitors to inform the development or revision and implementation of an ongoing community outreach program. You heard the police chief talk about the community resource position, coffee with a cop, and donuts for Charlie, and the dingy dash, which was good out there at Dutchman Creek. The fire department's been educating through the Fire Prevention Week, and also they attended the Barbie Library to read to the children about the fire. And then they opened, or they hosted an open house at Station Two to bring people in from the community there to the fire stations. Additional activities from both of these departments will be scheduled throughout the year, and Mike will be working on that to get that advertised, to make sure everybody knows of the events that will be forthcoming. Objective number two, town management in conjunction with the police chief will conduct a traffic safety study. Police chief went over that one. It continues to utilize a speed trailer to gauge the speed in high-traffic areas. We'll be working with Mike to implement a webpage so people can see where we're putting those, so they can see the results, and maybe they compare it if they live on 15th Street. And now it's on 16th Street, they can sort of compare the numbers from street to street so they can sort of see what's going on in their neighborhoods. Staff continues to work with our engineers and DOT for the Phase One of the Commercial Corridor Sidewalk Project. We have received approval from DOT for our first crossover at the intersection of 46th Street. We actually got that Saturday morning about nine o'clock. So DOT does work on Saturdays. We have asked for some other locations, and they're going to do the traffic studies for those during the 2023 season. The other eye areas that we're looking at is Barbie Boulevard, Southeast 79th, where the sidewalk's on one side and crosses to the other side, and then also at Southeast 40, where the last beach access is along East Oak Island Drive. Once plans are available, we will present them back to council for your approval for the first phase of the sidewalk project. Town management will formulate a streetscape plan for improving the commercial district. The plan will include options with respects to lighting, decorations, public art, and new pedestrian-friendly signage. Our report, including projected costs, potential partners, and funding sources, will be submitted to the town council for consideration. That work was scheduled for the third and fourth quarters. Staff has been working on pieces of this during the first and second quarter, but we have not worked out a defined plan. Councilman Martin here has been appointed as an alternate to the Cape Fear Cogs Regional Transportation Advisory Committee. It's a long word. And staff needs to set up some time to work with him and develop a plan and bring back to council. Also, there was another town management will explore potential of Greenway Projects. Now, that's basically the same answer. We'll be working with Councilman Martin. We'll get the environmental group involved in that as well, stormwater, public works. Everybody had to be involved in that to be able to get something. I think we're looking at first to get something from the rec center back to 46th Street or something like that, so we can tie the park and the walkway that we put in at the Middleton Park back into the rec center.
Excellent.
Review and update necessary town plans for disaster preparedness, response, and recovery management. We'll work with the PIO to produce and promote frequently asked questions for citizens, visitors, and concerning the town's disaster plans. In addition, management will ensure a tabletop exercise involved all decision-makers is conducted to test the soundness and the updated disaster response plan. Staff does review the emergency plans annually. Staff contacts all vendors to verify that we have the correct contacts, phone numbers, emails, et cetera. Some of the contacts include BMEC, Brunswick County Utilities, or Debris Contractor, and state agencies for our collection sites. Staff trains the damage assessment team manually prior to the start of the hurricane season. During a storm, staff also stays in contact with other local managers to see what they are planning and to see if they have established a timetable for any of their actions. This year, staff chose to use Hurricane Ian as our tabletop exercise, since it rolled in on us while we were doing the modifications, so we're able to use a live storm. So that worked out for us on that. All departments were gathered and briefed on the latest weather information. Department heads reviewed their items, depending on which level we were at during that time. Critical staff participated in meetings as needed and after county updates to see if anyone had changed with the storm and if we needed anything to modify our plans. Our more experienced staff worked well with our new department heads. We had a new police chief who hadn't gone through a hurricane like we go through down here. He had it in different areas, but it was a learning experience for him, so that worked out. I believe this experience and knowledge that our employees bring really makes a difference during these critical times. Council is updated on every action or item that comes before us. Staff, along with the mayor, participate in calls with Brunswick County EMS, in which the county provides updates and asks each town to provide a quick overview of actions taken so far or possible needs of the town. And we'll be attending one of those in the morning at 10:30 for Nicole. So we'll be doing that again tomorrow. Staff continues to update the web EOC with the latest town actions and requests. Our communication manager continually updates our website and social media pages, sends our emergency email notifications if needed, coordinates with the media, and issues press releases as needed. For Hurricane Ian, staff served as the damage assessment team and tested a new program for more efficient data collection. Staff is compiling an after-action report, and once that's completed, it'll be presented back to council and then submitted in for our CRC report, credits.
CRS rating.
CRS rating. We have to do that annually for our scores, so we'll submit that to the state. Staff continually maintains a section for hurricane preparedness on the town's website. As the storm is forecast or approaches, staff promotes this information through every available outlet. For example, the website currently has information about Tropical Storm Nicole, which is forecast to impact our area later this week. And those are our five objectives.
I just don't want to talk about that one. Yeah. Chief doesn't need to see a hurricane.
You don't want to talk about what?
Don't want to talk about Nicole.
Oh, okay. Well, the mayor and I will talk about it in the morning at 10:30.
Thank you, David, for that report. I very much appreciate it.
And we'll do the, we'll do the other ones as you directed.
Right, on subsequent, subsequent months.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. We're going to take another five-minute break?
Ten this time.
It may be ten this time, but we're going to ask to stick to five if we can. So, Mike, if you have minutes? We'll call the meeting back to order. The next business on the agenda is consideration of requesting a local act to allow the town of Oak Island to use proceeds from on-street parking in the same manner in which proceeds for off-street parking facilities are used. So in essence, this is a resolution that we will send to Representative Miller's office. It's really pro forma. Any of the municipalities around us are already on this list with the state as being given this approval. So I don't anticipate any issues, but I'm going to let Mr. Eads weigh in, as he's worked with a lot of these towns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You're correct in your assessment. All this does is allow the town to use the proceeds from on-street parking for any public purpose, which is the same authority you have for off-street parking, such as parking lots. I know the town of Raisel Beach has this similar local legislation. It's actually a local act of the General Assembly.
By the, okay.
So does the town of Surf City, and probably at least four or five other coastal towns have it. Surf City obtained theirs, I believe, two years ago. And thus far, it's been pretty, I don't want to say perfunctory, but there hasn't been that controversial in the General Assembly.
So this frees us up?
Yeah. The on-street parking proceeds can only be used to administer the cost of administering that program.
Or exactly.
Off-street can be used for any public purpose. So what this does is allow you to put that same pool of funds from on-street parking into the off-street parking for any public purpose.
Excellent. Are there questions from council?
No.
Is there? Go ahead.
This addresses one of the misconceptions, that parking revenues are plowed back into parking, therefore... parking, therefore the vendors aggrandizing us. God bless. This gives us discretion to fix roads, to build infrastructure, to do what we believe is critical, should we turn a net profit. That's from my friend's concern over there. We're assuming that we're going to get to that point, therefore we want the freedom to act in our best interest as we determine it. So I'll make a motion to support this. Make a motion to adopt the resolution requesting a local act from North Carolina General Assembly to allow the town of Oak Island to use paid parking revenue for any public purpose presented.
Is there a second? All in favor? Unanimously passes. Thank you very much. Moving right along. Consideration of adopting resolution of appreciation thanking our beach ambassadors. Lisa has written a resolution. It's in the packet. So do I have a motion for accepting the resolution as written?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution of appreciation for the town of Oak Island beach ambassadors as presented.
Second.
In favor?
Third. I don't think we need you right this minute, Mayor. I think we can do this.
I'm happy to step back. Consideration of a budget ordinance amendment for additional funds needed for a leaf truck purchase.
Yes, ma'am. I want to let Mr. Hatton address this, as he had all the good news earlier.
I love the look on his face.
And we're going to let him share some of the bad news later. No, it's not bad news. No, you can address who you want to. See, now, now you get to start. If you need Scott's assistance, you call Scott.
The budget amendment that I have presented before you tonight is, as Mr. Kelly said, is for a purchase of an extreme leaf and debris vacuum truck. If you'll recall, in the budget process that we're in now, in the budget, we did, you accepted and Scott's presentation on the leaf truck, and like everything else, as you hear day, every day in the news, it's gone up. And so now the price that was quoted is the $258,797 for this leaf truck, and I think it's a little bit better modeled than what you'd anticipated beforehand.
So the timing on this is one thing. If we, the way they presented to it, they have trucks right this moment. If they, if we don't purchase one of these that's available, they won't go back into production until next August.
Right.
So, right now, we have one that's limping along, and we need to get something to relieve some of the burden on that, and then hopefully repair the limping along one to last another year, year and a half, but give us some kind of relief. It was in the budget, yes, it was $192. The cost has gone up, but it's something that I believe we need in provide the services that we're providing to the public. We need to order this truck.
So, just out of curiosity, the quote was time limited?
Yes, sir.
What was the time limit?
They actually have them, they have this one on the lot, just received it two days in, a non-plastic letter that you can sell it. The next available one, the possibility of...
Yeah, so they're kind of putting a financial gun to our head here.
Yes.
And quotes all came in this time, making one about more, but it's just like...
This is much higher because it's, it's a superior model?
That's a part of it.
Find a man. And not everybody, not everybody has a leaf truck.
But, but I think Councilmember Box's initial question was, the original quote for $190 whatever that expired, that had a time limit to it?
Yeah, usually they, 60 days.
Yeah. When you do it a year ahead, that was even added, I didn't add that with the extra one. I actually received one from the last December. It came in March, it's gone up another $5,000, so I'll still do it.
So it was 100, David, it was 190,000?
195,000 was what was approved in the budget process.
Yeah, what is it now?
It's 262,000.
As you said, a newer model.
And the funds are there?
Well, I am, in the budget amendment, I've got, I'm transferring out a capital reserve for this, for this truck purchase.
Do you feel confident?
Use the 195 that was approved from solid waste. And again, this, as we, as Mr. Kelly and I have stressed over the last four or five years, try on each department to put money back in capital reserve. This is a classic example of why, you know, when we do have extra funds, to put them back in this capital reserve fund, and then with situations like this, we can move forward.
Ask the question, Charlie, because I think I'm going to have the same question.
Are you confident this is in, in the ballpark? I mean, we're not, they're not taking advantage of us, are they?
My expert knowledge of leaf trucks, I think this was a real...
They got other bids.
Thank you very much.
So if we approve this budget amendment, can we get the truck this time?
Yes.
I mean, we don't have to order it and wait for it, and it change price again?
No, it's there now, right, Scott? They're waiting on his word.
That's what you were talking about, letter of intent.
So we're not, hold on. I like your question. Let me just turn it slightly. So they, they gave us a quote, and the quote is good for 60 days. We're working with the same rules here, and we're going to buy it tomorrow? Or, well, assuming we, we pass the budget amendment, what's the turnaround here, Mr. Hatton? I want to make sure we get this truck, because I know we need it.
If y'all approve the, if you take action tonight, then Mr. Hatton will be able to transfer the funds from general fund. Then he'll be able to write the PO because the dollars will be in the account. Once the PO's issued, Scott will then provide that to the vendor, and then we'll start the purchase process. So that, that's what they need. They need a true PO number.
All right, so we're going to move with all due, due speed on this. That's, so we don't, it sounds like they could sell these trucks whenever they want, so.
If you drive the streets, we very much need this.
I agree.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to transfer the funds needed to purchase the leaf truck.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Go get the truck, Scott.
Mr. Hatton.
Get the truck.
Hurry back, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Hatton. So, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Mayor, that needs to be pursuant to NC General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 3, and A4, and A6.
And A6.
Add an A4?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session to consult with the town attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss specific personnel pursuant to NCGS 143, 318, 11A, 3, and A3, and A4, and 6.
And A4 is prospective economic expansion opportunities.
What he said.
Economic expansion opportunities. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Where are we meeting? Thank you.